Thank you.
Call to order the January 9th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Bush for our ceremonial opening.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt an agenda. If there are no changes or additions to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. That takes us to recognitions, reports, and presentations. We have a special guest in our audience. Kyle Mann from PAC 320 is working on his building a better work badge. If you would stand and be recognized. Thank you for being here. We now move to the manager's update, and I'll recognize Manager Stiegel at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. As the council is aware, we activated 311 on January 2nd, and I'm happy to report that things are going very well. For those who aren't familiar with what 311 is, think of it this way: burning question, 311; burning building, 911. What that means for our citizens in practice each day is that the only telephone number they need to know now for the town of Cary is 311, and the only email address they need to use is 311@townofcary.org. 311 is very popular in other parts of the country, and establishing a 311 center was one of the key goals and priorities the council had for the staff a couple years ago. We can now seamlessly track service requests and questions as well as our responses throughout the organization, and our citizens can track our responses to them by utilizing the system as well. And our advocates, truly the best of the best, with every call, they're developing encyclopedic knowledge of the town of Cary, and they're having a great time doing it. It's got to be the happiest place at Town Hall. Cary is the first 311 system in the Triangle. I'm so proud of what the team has been able to accomplish, and you won't believe how far we will have come in a year from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stiegel. We now move to the third item on the agenda, which is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda, and if you would like to speak, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and that works in your advantage because you get more time in a public hearing. There's a three-minute time rule, and the three minutes will be enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium. Starts off with a green light. When it turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and after those 30 seconds have expired, there will be a flashing red light, and that's when I will interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. To have an efficient Public Speaks Out, I would ask that if you're here with a group, have a spokesperson speak for your group to reduce repetitive comments. Also, if you'd like to speak next, I would ask that you stand over there in the stairway for two reasons: one, to make the meeting more efficient, and two, to let us know that we have another speaker. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that distracts from the meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
My name is Michelle Conlin, and I'm here to talk about the rezoning of Roberts Road, which is going to vote this evening. And I want to urge you to not approve the proposal to build 99 townhomes within our community. We are an established community of about 70 homes on around 300 acres, and the rezoning proposal would insert a community of 99 townhomes onto a space of about 30 acres within our community, fully within our community. It's not that we object to townhomes, it's that the townhomes are incompatible with the current land use. We are a rural community. We don't have sidewalks, we don't have streetlights, we don't have curbs, we don't have our street maintained by the city, or the town, or the state. It's a private street. It's a very different land use than a townhome community. When I say where we're rural, some of us have chicken coops, fishing ponds, horse stables, machine shops. People rebuild cars and even build airplanes. Yeah, that's what our community is. It's very rural. They are not the same land use goals as a townhome community. And our roads are dead end, they're private. We, who live there, we don't want connectivity. Not that it's a bad thing, just for our land use purposes of this established neighborhood, we don't want connectivity. Now, if you put 99 townhomes with two-car garages on a small area within our community and only propose to give them access out of one egress to Roberts Road, they're going to get really backed up. You know they will. And their land use goals are going to include better connectivity. We're not saying connectivity is bad or good, just for our land use, it's not compatible. Please do not vote to insert a townhome community within our area. We love our wildlife. We're really rural. I can't say that enough. We have coyotes, opossum, fox, deer. It's a healthy ecosystem. We love all that. If you construct 99 townhomes inside our community, we'll lose that. You know we will. It's not that we object to the townhomes per se, we object to them going here. Please don't approve this measure. You'll be creating conflict, conflict between us and what could be new neighbors. And isn't that what zoning and a planning board is supposed to prevent? Land use planning should prevent conflict between neighbors. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I reside at 113 High Country Drive, Cary. I am here today to ask that you consider filing an amicus brief to support the efforts of the Umstead Coalition and Tork to prevent a private mining company from operating on public lands. Here are three reasons to support my request. The financial package of the lease agreement nets the mining company approximately a half billion dollars in revenue, while RDU gets somewhere between eight to 24 million. If you throw in a security fence, which RDU projects to cost eight million dollars, RDU is now looking at well under a million dollars per year for the next 25 years. Those numbers are not good for RDU, or Wake, and Durham County residents. Next, aggregate supply and demand. We have three quarries within five miles of RDU. The Hanson Pit off of Durlie Road is set to expand on private property in 2020. That brings us to four active quarries that can service RDU growth for the foreseeable future. A fifth quarry on Oddfellows is not needed. Final reason, environmental impact. There exist 10 to 15 miles of hiking and biking trails on the Oddfellows Track that have existed for decades now. I would venture to say the trails existed long before the first folks from Marin County, California, rode a bike down a mountain and thus created the mountain bike industry in the late 70s. Compare these trails to a 30-foot swath of clear-cut land for a security fence, patrol vehicles, mining operations, diesel exhaust from heavy equipment, and 40-ton dump trucks. All of these will be operating for the next 30 years. Which land use option do you think will have the largest negative impact on the Triangle? I have a long history here in Cary. My parents were married at the First Baptist Church in downtown Cary. I moved to Cary back in 1988. The town was about 20,000 people back then, and I have seen it grow to its current 150,000 residents today. I am passionate and driven to ensure that we retain a good quality of life here in the Cary area. Currently, we are seeing well-planned, high-density housing being developed in downtown Raleigh and North Raleigh. Our surrounding communities of Apex, Morrisville, Durham, Chapel Hill, Knightdale, Garner, all are experiencing sustained, rapid growth. As a result, both the airport and Umstead, and I might as well throw in the Museum of Art, are all being crushed by the new residents. Parking lots are all packed. There are alternative development options that can benefit and accommodate RDU growth needs while preserving the 300 acres of woodlands bounded by RDU, Lake Crabtree, Crabtree Creek, and Umstead. To wrap things up, you can mine aggregate anywhere in Wake or Durham County and transport that aggregate to construction sites. However, if you lose the 300 acres of undeveloped land, I can guarantee that you will not transport green space from surrounding areas back to the heart of Raleigh-Durham. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your time and service, and remember, the most important task that you have is to do what's right for the town of Cary and the people that live, work, and play here.
Thank you. Thank you.
To your left. Thank you.
While you're getting the handout, good evening. I'm Dr. Jean Spooner, 2401 Trinity Farms Road. I represent the chair of the Umstead Coalition, the Friends Group for Protecting Umstead State Park. Today, I come before you to ask you to file an amicus brief, a friend of the court, to support our appeal and protect our public properties against what would be the first private rock mine 400 feet deep on public property in North Carolina with extreme detrimental impacts to the town of Cary, your Greenway system, and William B. Umstead State Park. I'd like you to pass a resolution opposing the proposed quarry and explicitly oppose the use of Old Reedy Creek Road for timber or other hauling going out your one-lane bridge. Ask RDU also to stop the proposed 8.3 miles of nine-feet-tall chain-link barbed-wire topped fence that they have just proposed and want to shove through without any public input or input from its owners. The fence does not serve any security. You can see from your attached map, the proposed fence is that red line, the existing security for the airport, which did coordinate with Umstead State Park to install, and I was involved in that in the 90s, is your yellow line. This would serve instead to have two isolated islands of land up to two-plus miles away from the runways. Instead, we can better utilize that funding for working with getting what we have suggested to get the airport more money and preserving those public lands for other trails and to be in better coordination with Umstead State Park. And the reason that we think you should participate in the active opposition of this destruction of our public lands with a private company is because this does affect directly the town of Cary. It's your sewage treatment plant, and its structural integrity that would be in jeopardy. It's the foundations of some of your citizens' homes, which are already feeling the impact of the current quarry and would be even closer for this pack. Some of the homes are actually destroyed now because of the existing quarry blasts in your town, your citizens. The Greenway connections to the Black Creek-Greenway Trail, Lake Crabtree, your trailhead, the Reedy Creek Road connections to Umstead State Park would look like that top graphics I just gave you. That is no way to welcome your citizens to your Greenway. Your residents and businesses in close proximity from not only the quarry blasts, but the trucking and the noise and the air quality pollution, your schools, which are in close proximity. Respectfully, we believe it is the town of Cary's rights and duties to help protect your citizens and protect our public lands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jason Behren. I'm here to speak to you all as the representative on behalf of the applicant in 18 RZ11, which is the Roberts Road rezoning case. I want to make three points. I don't want to say anything that is not otherwise going to be covered during your discussion associated with the case, but the three things I want to highlight, first, relates to the document that I just shared with you all. As folks might be aware, there is a sliver of the Roberts tract that actually is in the kind of southeastern corner of the parcel. It's cross-hatched on page two. That is a parcel that appears on the tax records to be part of Wood Forest and be part of the right-of-way that occupies Wood Forest and extends out to 55. That's actually part of the Page property. When Toll Brothers conducted title on the site, it apparently is part of the Page property. And so when Toll acquires the site, they will be acquiring that property. However, their plan is to deed that property to the owners of the property on the north and south within Wood Forest, so that when that deed occurs, and the letter that I've shared with you all is Toll educating and communicating that to those adjacent owners, when they deed that property, there will be no physical connection between the Toll Brothers site and Wood Forest Road. So the connectivity concerns that you heard from Ms. Conlin earlier tonight should be alleviated by the fact that when that transaction occurs, which will occur with the first plat of the subdivision, there will be no connection at all possible between the Roberts Road development and Wood Forest. The second point that I want to make is that, as you can see on that second page, the eastern boundary of this site has a significant riparian buffer. That riparian buffer is 100 feet on either side of the center line of the creek. The center line of the creek is actually kind of west of the eastern boundary of the site, and so the ultimate impact of that is there's in excess of 100 feet of buffer between this use and Wood Forest. I just wanted to point that out because there is a significant buffer associated with that riparian area. And the last point that I want to make, which you all might not be aware of, some of you might, is that south and east of this site along Roberts Road, obviously across Roberts Road is all in Apex, but recently, the town of Apex approved a townhome development within close proximity to the site. That townhome development is planned for 167 units of townhomes, roughly at 4.6 units to the acre. So I just wanted to make you all aware that whether the town of Cary acts to approve townhomes on the Roberts Road site or not, townhomes are coming to this area. The character of this area will be changing, you know, whether Cary wants it to or not. Because, again, Apex is entirely located across the street, across Roberts Road. So just wanted to make those three points, wanted to make you all aware that we're here to answer any questions that you might have about the case, and we respectfully request you all's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Behren. Next speaker, please.
My name is Whitney Rich, and I'm speaking on behalf of my family, the descendants of Johnny and Inez Page, and the owners of the Page Road property. Over the last few weeks, we've had the opportunity to meet several of you, and tonight, we want to sort of recap some of our family's histories, concerns, and needs. Johnny and Inez Page had four daughters, three of whom are here tonight. Dorothy Thorpe is the oldest and currently lives on the property with her son, daughter-in-law, and grandchildren. Evelyn Moss is the second oldest and also lives on the property on the southwest corner of the property. My mother was the third born, and she passed away in 2005. The youngest daughter is Yvonne Duarte, who in 1948 was born in the family home that still stands on the southeast corner of the property. My grandfather purchased the 63-acre tract in 1943 and was the first black man to own land in the green level Apex area. I'm sure you can imagine some of the obstacles that he faced in 1943, but for a while, he successfully managed to farm a portion of the land himself and rent the majority of it to local farmers. His investment allowed him to raise his four daughters and provide for their education, which was very important to him because at the time, he knew that education was the best way to beat the oppression that he faced in his life and to ensure a higher level of success for his daughters. In the 1990s, my grandfather sold 18 acres to a local developer for what is now Page Wood Forest. And I mentioned that my mother passed in 2005, and since that time, several developments that surround our property have been approved and completed. If you look at a map, you'll see that our property is now the donut hole in the middle of an area surrounded by other successful developments. This includes the townhome project that is currently under development across the street in the town of Apex. These developments in and around our property have caused a significant increase in its value, and as a result, our property taxes have gone from roughly $2,800 each year to over $12,000 each year. This liability is becoming difficult for my aunts to afford as they are all retired and widowed. Fortunately, during this process, Toll Brothers has been generous enough to loan us money to pay the taxes, but we're constantly concerned about accumulating more and more debt on the property. So we're at the point where we need to sell the property so that we can meet our tax responsibilities and continue to build the legacy that my grandfather established in 1943. He passed away in 2002, and my grandmother passed away the following year. Your approval tonight will allow him to continue to support his daughters and grandchildren and to educate his great-grandchildren. We believe that the Toll Brothers plan will do just that. We are here tonight at your mercy.
I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, but your time has expired. If you have additional comments, you leave them with the clerk, we'll be sure and read them.
I have one more sentence.
One more sentence.
We are here tonight at your mercy and can only ask that you approve this rezoning case. Thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one will close, Public Speaks Out, and we will move to the consent agenda. For the benefit of those people watching our meeting on TV this evening, I'm going to take a minute to review our consent agenda items. Please note that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. We have the bid award for the North Carolina Water Reclamation Facility Aeration Improvements Project, appropriation of funding for field improvements and license agreement with William Peace University at Wake-Mitt-Suckabar, the call for public hearing for 19810 Young Emerson and Hill Annexation 19818, Colonial Baptist Church Annexation 2019, Wake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, Technical Ordinance Supplementing Annexation Ordinance 16820 Kathleen Herndon Revocable Trust. If councilmembers like any of these items pull for discussion, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. There's a motion. Second. And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. And that takes us to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Instead of three minutes, you now have five minutes to speak. Our first public hearing is item 5.1, which is the 19RZ18 Young property. Principal Planner Katie Dry will introduce the item, and council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but instead, it's going to be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and it will return to council at a future date. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to annex and apply initial town of Cary zoning at property at 10201 and 10209 Morrisville Parkway. The property is located at the county border of Chatham County and Wake County, and the current zoning is Wake County-Chatham County R1 watershed. The applicants are requesting a zoning of transitional residential conditional use in watershed protection overlay district. The applicants have submitted a concept plan. This concept plan is a zoning condition proposed for the site. The concept plan shows streetscapes and buffers, development envelopes, stream buffers, community gathering areas, and circulation. The site also contains a historic farm complex, shown here on the concept plan, fronting Morrisville Parkway. The historic farm is known as the Bartley-Yates Farm Complex. This farm consists of a house and numerous outbuildings. The house was originally built in 1894, and based on staff's observations from a site visit, the house appears to be in very good condition, whereas some of the historic outbuildings appear to be in more poor condition. The applicants are proposing to preserve the house through a preservation easement and to remove the outbuildings. The house will be located in the main recreation area for the neighborhood and would remain in its current location along Morrisville Parkway Road. Other zoning conditions include limiting the use to a maximum of 190 detached dwellings. There's a condition to set the density maximum for the Chatham County portion at two units per acre max, and they're also completing road improvements at site access points in front of their property. The dimensional zoning conditions that are proposed include an increase in the open space requirements. The applicants are proposing 19.75 acres of open space. 17.75 acres would be required. This would be through stream buffers, wetland area, and other required open space such as perimeter buffers. They're proposing four acres of community gathering area minimum. The ordinance requires 5,000 square foot minimum or .11 acres. They're proposing to increase the streetscape to 70 foot. The ordinance requires 50 foot, which would be a type A screening. And they're proposing to increase the lot size to 6,000 square feet, and at least 50% of the lots would have 7,000 square foot minimum. The TR zoning district for the LDO would require 5,000, so they're increasing it from that base requirement of the ordinance. They're also proposing to increase the side yard setbacks to five feet, where the TR zoning district typically requires zero to three foot minimum. According to the town of Cary's GIS maps, as well as the concept plan submitted by the applicant, it appears that about 13 and a half acres of the site may be impacted by protected streams and wetlands, and field determination of these features would occur at the time of development plan. The transportation plan notes that Morrisville Parkway will transition from a four-lane median-divided roadway to a two-lane roadway at the county line. The road name also changes from Morrisville Parkway to Luter Shop Road when entering Chatham County. Town transportation staff and NC DOT have coordinated on this project, and the development plan will make an appropriate transition along the road furniture from a four-lane down to a two-lane cross-section. There was also a traffic study for this rezoning. The traffic study identified two improvements at site access points, and the applicants have offered to complete all of these improvements recommended with the traffic study. The site will be evaluated using the guidance of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. Applicable chapters include the Live, Engage, Shape, Move, and the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan, which is an appendix of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. The portion of the site within Chatham County will be evaluated under the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan, and the portion in Wake County will follow the green level special planning area from the special planning area section of the plan. When looking at the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan, staff's preliminary analysis finds that the case is consistent with the density guidance from the Joint Land Use Plan. The applicant has proposed a zoning condition that limits the density on the Chatham County portion to two units per acre, which is consistent with the guidance of the land use plan. Other applicable policies may include preserving the rural character of a bulk of the area and focusing the most intense land uses towards the eastern boundary of the plan. So in addition to the density condition, the condition to preserve the historic house and to increase the streetscape along the site furniture will help to address these policies. policies. The Chatham, the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan will include a Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan update for this area, which is expected to be considered for adoption in early 2020. There is a greenway corridor adjacent to the site in the Woodall subdivision, and the site would be required to provide a public connection to this greenway corridor. The streetside trail is proposed along the north side of Morrisville Parkway and Luter Shop Road, and the American Tobacco Trail is about .4 miles to the east of the site. The portion of the site within Wake County is within the Green Level Special Planning Area. Projects within the Green Level Special Planning Area are intended to be designed to help protect critical environmental features and provide open space opportunities while also including traditional suburban amenities. New neighborhoods in the western portion of the Green Level Special Planning Area are intended to have lower densities than the eastern portion, but also higher than the neighboring Chatham County area. Looking at the density, the proposed maximum number of lots for this site is 190, which equals an overall density of 2.07 units per acre. This density is below the aggregate maximum density of 2 and 1/2 units per acre, which is envisioned for the Green Level Special Planning Area specifically for neighborhoods in the western part of the Special Planning Area or west of Flat Branch. We've also looked at the current densities within the Green Level Special Planning Area, and we find that the overall density is at 1.47 units per acre currently. East of Flat Branch is 1.55 units per acre, and west of Flat Branch is about 1.4 units per acre. The plan also states that development should be shielded from view from thoroughfares. A 50-foot wide streetscape is required along Morrisville Parkway and Luter Shop Road. The applicant's proposing to increase this to 70 feet. The streetscape would be required to be planted to a type A standard, which is intended to provide the greatest degree of screening feasible for the Town of Cary's ordinance. Other policies discussed include heritage open space. This rezoning proposes to preserve the existing historic structure through a preservation easement with capital area preservation. This addresses policy guidance from the Green Level Special Planning Area because it will retain the historic structure in its original location fronting Morrisville Parkway. There was a neighborhood meeting in September of 2019, and there were 23 attendees at the neighborhood meeting. Many of these were from nearby neighborhoods, mostly adjacent to the subject site. We heard questions about the comprehensive plan applicability, just some concern over continued growth in the area, potential impacts to road, specifically due to construction in the area and construction on roads, also questions and concerns about bicycle safety, in particular, bicycle traveling to the American Tobacco Trail. Since the neighborhood meeting, there have been a few phone calls and emails, some just gathering general information on the case, others voicing concerns, concerns about just general growth in the area as well as impact on roads and traffic. For the public hearing tonight, properties within 800 feet were noticed. This exceeds the towns and state requirements for notification. And so this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant's here to hear comments, and following the public hearing, we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Baron with Morningstar Law Group. Here tonight on behalf of the applicants in this case, as well as Taylor Morrison, who's the proposed developer of the site. Here with me tonight is Jeremy Medlin of Taylor Morrison, as well as Bob Zomwold of McAdams. Company at McAdams has been doing engineering and land planning associated with the pretty picture that's in front of you, as well as the engineering that's been put into determining what can be put on the site. Katie's done a very thorough job of covering the, the details of the, of the zoning proposal and the request that is being made. I just wanted to highlight a handful of points related to that. This is the public hearing stage of the case, as you all are aware. It's still pretty early. There's still a lot of work to be done on the case, and yet there are 13 conditions associated with the case. That, those 13 conditions are a reflection of the laser focus that you all staff has had with respect to the recommendations and the policies of the Cary Community Plan, and specifically the Green Level Special Planning Area, and the manner in which we have been working to respond to comments, questions, and concerns coming from the staff to ensure that whatever happens on this property is indeed consistent with those policies. And so, and we believe, as, as the applicant, that the case that is before you tonight, and it might need additional work, and we're waiting to hear the feedback that you all have, but we believe that ultimately, from a big-picture standpoint, this is a development that will fit neatly within the community where it's to be located, especially when you consider the policies that are applicable to the site. I do want to talk about a handful of the conditions just because they are fairly significant with respect to the case. As, as Katie talked about, there are significant increases with respect to open space, and especially the community gathering areas. The community gathering area is, is one that Taylor Morrison is, is, is very excited about with respect to the site because the historic home makes it a great opportunity, you know, providing for the historic home. And if you haven't been by there, I highly recommend you drive up there. It's a gorgeous home. Being able to preserve it has been a priority from Taylor Morrison from day one, and they have been coordinating with capital area preservation to work out the terms of a preservation easement to ensure that that happens. But really, it has created a scenario and a situation where the interests of the town align neatly with the interest of the folks who want to develop the site, who, who find a unique value and be able, and being able to create a front door to this development that preserves kind of that rural character of the area and do so on a three, a minimum three and a half acre site. As you can see on the, the concept plan that's before you, that's a minimum of three and a half acres immediately adjacent to the public right-of-way, and that's behind a 70-foot type A buffer that will be required. And as noted in the staff report, those buffering requirements can be reduced in front of the, in front of the historic home to ensure that that rural character is enforced, and as folks drive by, they can see the historic home. But in the areas where the home is not located, there will be that 70-foot type A buffer. So we believe that, especially the conversations that have occurred at you all's table with respect to, you know, how do we keep something rural, recognizing that when it develops in the Town of Cary, it's kind of tough to say that it's rural. We, we're trying to craft that balance. You find that balance between what is ultimately is municipal, and that is Cary standards with respect to roads and things of that nature, but at the same time, preserving historic structures. And so that has been, like I said, a priority for Taylor Morrison from day one, and they're excited about that opportunity. I do want to note with respect to lot size, this is a transitional residential conditional use case. I, I know that the, you know, every time a TR request is made, there's a hypersensitivity associated with that just because 5,000 square foot lots are small. And, and just want to point out that the minimum has been increased to 6,000 square feet. At least 50% of those lots have to be 7,000 square feet. And I think most importantly, the setbacks with respect to the homes that could be built in this site are actually the R8 setbacks. Those are the five-foot setbacks on either side, so you don't have that situation where you've got the small lots and then you've got them kind of, you know, the, the home shoved in about six feet apart. I think I've seen Mr. Mayor on more than one occasion, you know, spread his arms apart and say that's how far apart the homes could theoretically be. And so we have conditioned that to ensure that that does not occur. And then the last point that I want to make is we've been working with the transportation staff like we do on every case and have incorporated conditions based upon their feedback, as well as feedback from NC DOT, to ensure that the treatments associated with traffic along Luter Shop Road are consistent with what everybody's expectations are. And so with that, we're here to answer any questions that, that you all may have. We look forward to you all's feedback and continuing to work on this development plan to make it one that you all will be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. Now's the time for the public hearing for 19REZ-18 Young Property, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening. My name is Brent Miller. I'm a citizen of Cary. As you heard, the Bartley and Martha Yates Farm is located on the Wake-Chatham County line. The Yates Farm features an outstanding collection of outbuildings in addition to a large farmhouse. The farm represents one of the most intact turn-of-the-century farm complexes in Wake County. The outbuildings include a tobacco barn and a packhouse where harvested tobacco was cured and moved back and forth between the buildings using the doors on the first and second floors of the buildings. Other outbuildings include a horse and mule barn, an ice house. Ice blocks were harvested from the pond in the winter, and they usually lasted in that ice house until midsummer. That's how they had refrigeration at that time. A meat house where meat was cured and stored, a wash house where water was heated in the fireplace to do laundry, and an outhouse, which the owner at the time, I talked to them, called a Johnny House. And as the staff report states, the property is listed in the Cary Historic and Architectural Resources Inventory. Indeed, it is among the top tier of properties in that inventory according to the rankings that the Historic Preservation Commission has performed, and a significant reason for that high ranking is the fact that it's an intact farm complex with an outstanding collection of outbuildings. The staff report also states that the historic outbuildings appear to be in very poor to fair condition. The ones that you saw in your presentation that were selected for those photographs might be, but for other buildings, I have to respectfully disagree. Some of the outbuildings do have substantial issues, but others, especially the tobacco barn and the packhouse, which I photographed today so that you would be able to see one of, a collection of outbuildings that's in a much better condition, and you have those in front of you along with some earlier photos with details. Those are in good condition, and they happen to be important historic resources. I do applaud the developer's commitment to preserve the farmhouse, which is an important historic resource. However, I believe that making a blanket statement that all the outbuildings are not worth saving is just taking the easy way out. Many of the outbuildings are equally important to the historic context of this property, and some of them are good candidates for present, for preservation based on their condition and proximity to the house. So documentation of the properties via an aerial photograph for Cary's historic archives, as the staff report says will be done, is admirable, but more can be done. And given the significance of this property, I think more must be done. The outbuilding should be individually evaluated to identify the ones that have significance and integrity and therefore merit preservation. Ideally, many of these structures could be preserved in their current location. Alternatively, some might be moved a short distance. Not all the outbuildings are worth preserving, but many of them may be. I think we should do that determination. So I do encourage the town and the applicant to make a genuine effort to preserve those outbuildings on this property that merit preservation. Many resources exist to assist in this effort. The State Historic Preservation Office, Capitol Area Preservation, the Friends of the Page Walker, and the Town's Historic Preservation Commission. And I'll just remind you that this is a highly ranked property in the Town of Cary's Historic Resources Survey. Many years ago, I had the privilege of having a conversation with the owner at that time, Clyde Young. He told me of his desire to preserve this property and the way of life it represents. That's why having an intact farmstead is important, and I think we can do that preservation simultaneously with the progress that this rezoning application seeks. In Cary, we're known for going the extra mile to make our community the best it can be. Preserving our history is a big part of that, and there's hardly a better example of when we ought to make that extra effort than with this property. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll remind you that this goes now to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and we'll probably see it in two to three months, somewhere around in that timeframe. We now move to our second public hearing, 19REZ Carpenter Village PDD Amendment. And Assistant Planning Director Deborah Grantan will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but it'll be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board. The item will return to council at a future date. Ms. Grantan.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request to amend a portion of the Carpenter Village Plan Development District. At the time, it was initially zoned about two years ago. It was the Feral Farms property, which became a portion of the Carpenter Village PDD, and now the subdivision is under construction. It's called Savon. They've started working on it, and they've realized, as you know, with a PDD, the developer and the applicant can sort of craft their own zoning conditions. They can set their own dimensional standards, density, building type, product type. They can ask for whatever height they want to unless they forgot to ask for a modification to the height, which is what happened here. They wanted a 42-foot tall townhome building. The ordinance sets a limit at 35 feet, and they discovered that when they started the construction of the project. So this area in yellow shows the overall PDD portion and the subject zoning. The impacts are only to the area highlighted with the blue dashed line. It is PDD major. That's the zoning designation, and that would remain in place, but the only changes would be to modify the height of the townhomes in those areas designated with that tan color. No other changes to the use, to the density, to the buffers. No other changes are proposed, but because this is a change to the zoning conditions, they have to go through this rezoning process. So in our initial analysis, we find that a number of the Cary Community Plan policies are not directly applicable because there's no other changes, but that the townhome use and the height increase is consistent with the live and shape policies. There's still a 50-foot streetscape buffer, and we've not observed that this is readily obvious about the increase in the height change. So we had a neighborhood meeting here in December. We only had two attendees, and those in attendance didn't express any concerns. They wanted to talk about traffic and other issues. We have had a few emails from citizens just making sure they understood the scope of what was being proposed, and we were able to offer some reassurance, you know, that the conditions would be clearly spelled out. We did do notification to property owners within 800 feet of the subject property, which exceeds the state and town ordinance requirements. And this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant's here to make a few comments, and then following the public hearing, I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grantan. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the town council. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Want to thank Deborah for her presentation. We are coming to you very humbly today, as we have forgotten with the original zoning to request the height modification. I will tell you that it was always the plan to provide a 42, 42-foot high townhome product in this location, simply something that was left off of the original rezoning or previous rezoning, and that's why we're here. There's not a whole lot to this rezoning. It is somewhat of an oddity, but as you're aware, the, there is, there are a few units that are under construction. I want to be very clear that in no way are we using that as any kind of justification for this rezoning. We believe the request for additional height here has merit on its own. I think there are some pictures in your staff materials showing those units in relation to the units just south in this area, and you can see there's quite a difference in the way those, those units appear, and that is because there is some grade change. So the, the land here is a little bit lower than the street, so even with the height increase, the townhome units that will be built actually appear, don't, don't appear as tall as the units across the street, and, and yet they're roughly the same height. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. There's not a whole lot to say about this rezoning. It is simply a request for additional height, strictly limited to the townhome units in that area highlighted on the page in front of you. So we're hoping to have your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This nails time for, excuse me, nails time for the public hearing, 19REZ-24 Carpenter Village PDD Amendment, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Brian Stone. I live in Carpenter Village across the street from this development, and I'm a representative of the HOA, and I am part of the HOA, and really, there's no reason to have anything that tall in that area. If you build it up to 42 feet, then you'll be obstructing the view behind it where we see the forest and other buildings going up in the landscape. I just don't think it's merited. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. I'll open it up to council members for question or comments. By the way, I realize I didn't do that for the last one. We're going to get back to that in a minute. So questions or comments from council?
Just, in the staff report, it talked about the fact that the townhouses could, 16REZ-02 allowed townhouses up to 45 feet and mixed-use buildings up to 50. 02 allowed townhouses up to 45 feet and mixed-use buildings up to 52 feet. Is that the one across the street?
Correct, yeah.
And, and what were they constructed? That's what it allowed them to be, but what are they constructed at?
This gives you an idea of, you know, what it, what it looks like with the existing townhomes, with the Carpenter Village apartments on the opposite side of the street. So they're very similar, you know, and this, as Mr. Gosh explained, what's under construction right now with Savon does have a streetscape. It's a very low-performing streetscape at this time. It's newly vegetated, so it really doesn't offer much screening in here. But these actually sit below the crest of the road. They're below grade, so they do appear to actually be a little bit shorter than what's on the opposite side of the street.
And?
But I don't, I don't know exactly, you know, what that height is with the finished product. We can get that for you going forward, but that did allow what's being asked for here. It did allow the same height that's being asked for now.
And it, generally, when we go, when we add additional height, we have them come back from the street, right? So they're allowed a certain number of feet.
If they have room to increase their setbacks.
Right.
Then they can go up one foot for each additional foot of setback provided.
Right.
That almost worked here because they were set back further than was required, but they didn't have additional setback space on the sides to work with. So we tried that approach first to see if we could avoid another public hearing, to see if we could do it administratively and still work within the ordinance, and that just didn't quite work. That's why we had to go through this process.
Okay, and it's only for the shaded portion of that?
Correct.
It's not for the other? Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and we'll see it in the future. And I'd like, before we leave public hearings, to go back and open up to council, the previous rezoning, 19REZ, the Young property, to see if there are questions or comments about that. I'm looking at Mr. Yerha, since he's very interested in historic properties. However, I thought the comments in the staff presentation pretty much covered it. You have anything to add?
Hopefully, we're all interested in historic properties.
Yes.
Yeah, I want to thank the applicant, especially Mr. Medlin, for his efforts to preserve that house. Not only is he preserving it, preserving it in its original location, which is, you know how I feel about that, that aspect, and he's taken it a step further. We understand the Capitol Area Preservation has approved the preservation easement on the property. So that's about as good as you can get, and it's what we hope for, for all houses going forward. As far as Mr. Miller's comments with the outbuildings, I, I agree with him. If there is any way to relook at some of that, to see what can be saved, what cannot, and if a building itself cannot be saved on site, perhaps there may be some components or features, or at least the wood from some of the outbuildings, might be able to be used somehow in the overall development to increase the rural character of the development. But I think it's a great effort by a, by a good developer.
Are there any other questions or comments about the Young rezoning before we continue? Okay, very good, and I apologize to council for blowing right through that. All right, that takes us to our discussion item. We have two discussion items, but we're going to take them at the same time. We have 18808 Roberts Road and Pedro Properties Annexation and 18REZ 11 Roberts Road rezoning. We're going to present them together. Katie Dry will introduce it, and we're going to hear from the Planning Board about what they recommend, and we may take action. I'll just remind council, in these types of cases, we want to, we have to vote for the annexation before the rezoning, so if we don't feel that we're going to pass the rezoning, we probably want to let everybody know before we vote on the annexation. So, okay, having said that, recognizing Mrs. Dry.
All right, hello again. This is an annexation and rezoning request for 37.47 acres at Roberts Road and Page Road. This is a case that was submitted originally in April of 2018. It has been revised numerous times. The case was originally scheduled for a council decision in June of 2019 and was removed from the agenda at the applicant's request in order to spend additional time working on concerns raised by nearby property owners. The site is located off of Roberts Road. It sits in between NC 540 and NC 55. All of the properties are within Wake County's jurisdiction, and they have a Wake County zoning of R40 watershed. The applicant has requested to annex the site into the town limits and has submitted both an annexation and rezoning application. The annexation would be a non-contiguous or satellite annexation. The town may annex the site because we have an annexation agreement with the Town of Apex that runs along Roberts Road. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use with the watershed protection overlay district, and the applicant is offering zoning conditions associated with this proposal. They're proposing to limit the use to townhouses and neighborhood recreation, to set the number of units at 99 maximum. As you may recall, the application was originally for 127 units, or three and a half units per acre. This has been changed since the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. There would be 15 acres of open space and 15,000 square feet of community gathering space, which is three times the required amount per the LDO. They're proposing to increase the perimeter buffer from the LDO-required 40 feet to 50 feet. They're also committing to the use of public streets and architectural conditions for the townhome units. The applicant has also submitted a concept plan for the purpose of showing open space on the site. The site has required stream buffers. These are shown in crosshatching. There's also required buffers along the perimeters and streetscapes. This is also shown with the crosshatching. The stream buffers and the required perimeter buffers constitute about one-third of the site. Additional managed open space areas, which are shown solid green, may be cleared, graded, and landscaped, but they may not include building structures. They may include stormwater control measures, however. Additionally, the area shown in white would be allowed to be constructed with townhome units. Together, the required buffer areas and the additional managed open space are about 40% of the site. Staff's review of the case with the Imagine Cary Community Plan found that policies of the Live and Shape chapter were most applicable. The site is located in the traditional neighborhood category, which predominantly consists of single-family detached dwellings. Traditional neighborhoods often do include moderate amounts of other housing types, though, such as patio homes, townhomes, and multifamily housing, but these tend to be sited in discreet pods. The proposed use may be consistent with this policy if the, if the site qualifies as such a pod of denser development. Other criteria to help with this determination include looking at transitions. Transitions can be viewed on a case-by-case basis to consider changes in uses, and in this case, it would be looking at townhomes next to single-family detached dwellings. The applicant has proposed conditions and effort to comply with this policy, and there are existing natural buffers created with the stream buffers along the property line to the east, as well as partially bisecting the site on the western part of the property. And just southwest of the site, across Roberts Road, is Apex's planning jurisdiction. The 2030 land use map planned for Apex calls for a medium-to-high-density residential in this area, and in 2018, Apex approved a rezoning that allows for a mix of detached dwellings and townhouses with an overall maximum density of 4.7 units per acre. When staff evaluated the case, we also consulted policies from the Live chapter, which speak to providing more housing choices for all residents and the provision for housing options in newly emerging neighborhoods. So when we zoom out a little bit and we look at the larger area, including neighborhoods that are adjacent, as well as neighborhoods that are to the north, such as the Harmony subdivision, and even the school, Turner Creek Elementary School, we note that the current mix of uses consists primarily of single-family detached houses as well as the school. So this proposal could be viewed as providing more housing choices by adding townhouses to the mix of housing near the site. We also note that the mix of uses and whether the site continues to be considered a pod will depend on how properties around the site develop in the future. Connectivity has been a point of discussion throughout the duration of this rezoning. The town's planned roadway widths map calls for a future northbound Collector Avenue to be constructed through a portion of the site. This road is intended ultimately to connect Roberts Road to Turner Creek Road to the north. The applicant has also reduced the number of townhouses to 99 units maximum since the Planning and Zoning Board. And with this change, the applicant's no longer to require to have access to two public streets, meaning that one point of access could be from Roberts Road, and there would be no through connection to Wood Forest Drive, as shown at the location where the red circle's located. The development plan, however, would be required to stub, which would facilitate the ability to have a connection at some point in the future. There has been community feedback throughout the duration of the case. Concerns have been expressed regarding the use of townhouses, the density of the project, side access, traffic, impact to whales and septic systems, and impacts to nearby houses. The applicant has also made changes throughout the project, responding to some of the concerns. By reducing the number of units to 99, a through connection to Wood Forest Drive is no longer required. The concept plan has also increased perimeter buffers and additional open space. The applicant has met with nearby residents on November 6th of 2019 to share some of these changes. However, we are, staff is still hearing some concern from neighbors who are still opposed and concerned with the case. Staff's analysis finds applicable policies from the, come from the Live, Shape, and Move chapters of the Imagine Cary Plan. We know that the sites within the traditional neighborhood of the Future Growth Framework map, the traditional neighborhood category lists townhouses as the predominant land use, and it states that townhouses should be developed within pods. Various factors can be considered on a case-by-case basis to determine if a rezoning proposal meets the intent of a pod. These factors may include looking at the larger area and development patterns of surrounding properties, reviewing the proposed buffers and transitions associated with the site, as well as other components of a rezoning case. In this case, the applicant has proposed an overall density of 2.64 units per acre. The applicant has also submitted an open space concept plan, which commits to roughly 40% open space and increased perimeter buffers. The applicant has also committed to limiting the number of units within townhouse buildings and architectural conditions. And we note that the stream buffers on the site along the eastern property line and bisecting the site towards the western property line assist with the transition to ensure that the main developable area for townhouses will be internal to the site with increased buffers between the units and adjoining properties. So overall, staff's review finds the case to be on balance, consistent with the Cary Community Plan. The Planning and Zoning Board discusses case in April of 2019, and Board Chair Ryan Eads is here to share with you the discussion and their recommendation.
Good evening. As Mr. Dry mentioned, the board did find this case to be inconsistent with the Cary Community Plan, but due to some of the changes that we'll highlight, that might not hold. There's a couple of general concerns that were thrown out regarding the case. The first was a lack of proximity to a mixed-use center or amenities. There was also a member that felt that this request would have been better served as a mixed-use rezoning, possibly throwing some single family in there instead of just a solely townhome development. But there are really two major topics that we threw around during our discussion. The first was this idea of pods. As Ms. Dry mentioned, there is a bit of ambiguity about what exactly is a pod and how we should evaluate whether or not a request meets the criteria for being a pod. I'd say about half of the board felt that we should interpret the idea of a pod specific to the rezoning request itself. Those members felt that this request therefore did not meet the criteria for a pod because this townhome development did not provide the shielding or the feel of being in a pod. The other half, I'd say, of the members felt that you really have to evaluate this holistically, take a step back, zoom out a bit, and maybe look at the surrounding areas. When you take that into account and the possibility that other rezonings are going to, of course, come in and, and develop areas around this, then you very easily could have a pod feel. Not knowing what's going to come down the road, though, it's, it's hard to say. So they felt that this did, in fact, meet that criteria of, of being a pod. The other big area of concern is connectivity. And as you guys, of course, have heard from citizens, mainly the connectivity with Wood Forest Drive, of course, being a private road, any connectivity there was really, gave some of our members some angst. Being as the applicant has now reduced the request to 99 units and only, as Ms. Dry mentioned, there's only one entrance or exit required, I kind of think that those are really moot at this point. So I think that really sums up our deliberations and discussion. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Eads?
I do not.
Thank you.
So this concludes staff's presentation, and as noted, on the presentation, the property's located out of, outside of the Town of Cary's corporate limits and ETJ, so actions necessary first on the annexation, followed by the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments.
Well, I'll, I'll start. As you guys all know, because we discussed this when it came to public hearing, I had a lot of reservations about the proposal that was before us, the density and then the connection into the neighborhood to the east. Since that time, the applicant has reduced the density, and now there's just going to be a signed stub there, which I do think is important for us to have a stub there, but it won't go connecting into the neighborhood. Should the neighborhood to the east ever decide that they want to be in the municipality and they want to connect, it's there, the stub is there. If they decide to sell, which may happen someday in the far future, you know, the stub is there. So I think we have the provisions for that connectivity, should it ever be wanted by the community to the east. I think the density of 99 units on this is reasonable. I think that there's tremendous buffers around it. I think those who will live here will feel like they're in a pod. I think it will feel very much like an enclave with the amount of buffers. So all in all, I think that there've been improvements to the proposal.
Other thoughts?
I'm, I'm in line with you. I was going back and forth when we first heard this a long time ago, and there were three things that made a difference for me. One, obviously, as you, as you mentioned, you know, the more than 20% decline or reduction in the number of units. Also, the removal of the ambiguity of the finger or the sliver or whatever it's called. The finger was amputated, if you will, and, and now given to the adjacent homeowner. So that should help the rest of the community feel confident that there's no ambiguity with the connection anymore, and if it turns and redevelops, if, it will be up to them to make, to make that decision. The other thing that has swayed me is the fact that the huge 167 townhome development just across the street, which is medium-to-high density, 4.67, that's another transition point as well. So it seems like a likely transition and step up rather than having it directly across. And, you know, the 100-foot buffers, you, you couldn't pay to get that. So that, you know, someone on high put those two stream buffers in the perfect place for this. So from my perspective, and buffers that can't be touched, I think if you were going to put a pod anywhere, this is a naturally, for me, a naturally occurring place, and I, I hope that one of the other things that, should this pass, I hope that the Toll Brothers will pay homage to the Page family. I think that this, I know we have nothing to do with it, but it sure would be nice if this family was remembered in the name of this subdivision should, should it pass.
So don't call it Savon.
Don't call it Savon.
Other thoughts, comments?
I've got a question for staff. So as I look at this, you know, are we going back to having an island in Cary? Is this completely free with nothing around it or to Cary? That's my question.
Yes, this would be a satellite annexation, but we're allowed to have a certain percentage of our corporate limits as satellite annexations. Also, making sure that there's other criteria that are met. The fact that we have an annexation agreement with Apex also works towards why the town would be able to annex this property.
Thank you.
Other thoughts?
When this first came to us, I guess it was in 2018, I was a definite no at that time because I certainly didn't want to see all the newly generated traffic funnel through a quiet neighborhood street. That was, that was a no for sure. But that's not going to happen now. So I think we've got to look at it with the basic questions that we look at every rezoning. Is the use and density appropriate? And I think in traditional neighborhood, it's clear that the use is appropriate. Townhomes are allowed, and it gets... Townhomes are allowed, and it gets back to the definition of pod. Some people think of a pod like a pea pod, something has to be very tiny. I looked in the dictionary, there's no dependency on size at all when it comes to the definition of a pod, even though we don't define it in our comprehensive plan. It's a pod is sort of a compartment, it's part of a whole, something with defined boundaries that may have a slightly different use than the area surrounding it. And I think that's a perfect definition for what we have here. This seems to me to be a pod. Stream buffers certainly enhance that. And as far as the density, two-point-six-four per acre, that's not high density. We've heard that, you know, this townhomes are high density. It's not high density by Cary standards. It's not medium density. Two-point-six-four is low density, and I think that density is appropriate. So there are challenges that need to be addressed with this one as time goes on, mostly with site plan, but I think from a rezoning standpoint itself, to me, it's appropriate.
Other thoughts and comments?
I appreciate the comments from Ms. Robinson and others. Actually, came with a lot of comments prepared to say, and I don't have to say them all. So that's really cool. But to Ed's point on the pod, I tend to look at, I think what we heard from Mr. Eads earlier, you know, some people were taking a holistic view of the area, and that's kind of how I looked at it. And when you look at the entire area that was identified as traditional neighborhood, it's about five-hundred-and-forty-three acres. When we look at this, the case before us, that's thirty-seven acres or roughly seven percent of the total area. So a seven percent portion of property in an overall larger area, I consider it a pod. I mean, to me, it met the definition. It met the definition the last time we saw this. I actually think they're making a mistake not connecting. I do. But that's my personal opinion. I think we connect for a reason. It's public safety, access, and those kinds of things. I get the issue with private streets versus public streets, and that can get messy, and so I understand that, but I can't help but think sometime in the future, somebody's going to come back and want that connection because I think it's going to ultimately be the right thing to do. But that said, everybody else has made good comments, and I support the proposal as well.
Comments?
I actually know the area very well. We've lived very close to that area for over a decade, and my son graduated from Tanner Creek. My daughter still goes to Tanner Creek, and I know the whole neighborhood, and I actually drive through Roberts Road quite a bit. And I'm sympathetic to the neighbors who raise concerns about traffic. Roberts Road is not easy to drive around, even the roads that's close to that neighborhood. So if this development does get approved, and I would encourage the applicants to really think about, when you develop the site plans, think hard about how to develop a good site plan to minimize the traffic impact because that's really the number-one concern that the neighbors in close, very close proximity to this neighborhood, they are really concerned about this. But I do think the townhome is a proper use for that area. And I'm concerned about the potential impact of the increased neighborhoods on the schools. So that's one issue we need to watch out for. But I do think the townhome is a proper use for that area, and that would provide more housing options for the residents in Cary.
So I'm the only one that hasn't weighed in?
Well, I asked a question.
Okay, please, go ahead.
I mean, I actually don't like it at all, but I'll support it. And if that sounds crazy, I think part of that is me. The reality is, we're trying to get away from the satellites, but this area is going to grow. And the sad thing is, anybody out there that thinks they're going to keep building airplanes and this is going to stay rural in character, those days are gone. They're just gone. The settlers are coming, and I'd rather have Cary building to our standards, which are lower density than what you've got right next door to it. And maybe that sounds a little bit conceited or condescending, but, you know, I still feel better that we're taking this on with the full realization, a lot of that area surrounding it, it's just a matter of time before it comes in, and I'd rather it be coming in in a Cary way. Townhomes don't bring the kids. We're not going to have an issue with schools. And I also agree strongly with Don. There will be a day you will regret not having the connection. But we are putting in the stub. There's still a part of me that thinks we should have that connection and not wait for that day, but I accept that as part of compromise. I accept that as part of the give and take. This is not a perfect product. But when I hear the reasons to remain rural, to do this, this is a good transition piece. And though I personally have some concerns about it and that island nature of it, I think if I take a long enough view out over the next few years, it's the right thing to do. Not crazy about it, but it's the right thing to do, and I'll support it for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I tend to agree with you and all my colleagues. I know I had still a lot of problems earlier in the week, and I remember talking with Mr. Yeha and Ms. Bush, and they made a lot of good points, which pretty much changed my mind. I still am concerned, and I'm not excited about it either. I'm still in concern because basically we're creating a ninety-nine home cul-de-sac, and I think that's a safety issue. And maybe we need to reconsider our standards that allows that. God forbid we had have another Hurricane Fran, that a tree falls down over the entrance and there's nothing we can do. And that's the reason we have two entrances to neighborhoods, is so you don't get stuck like that. But that's my main concern. I agree with the buffering and the type of use makes the difference in my mind. I'm not excited about townhomes in that area, but across the street, you've got much more density than that. The area will remain rural as long as the property owners keep their properties. Usually, we've seen those have been here thirty-something years, have seen people come here and say, "Not over my dead body," and that's exactly what happens. The people die out, and their kids sell it, and they redevelop it, and that's the process we've been seeing over the years. So to keep it rural, you have to keep owning the property or donate it to Triangle Land Conservancy or something. Other than that, it's going to redevelop, and that's why we have the Cary Community Plan to guide us when these property owners come in and want to develop their land to a more dense area and bring it into the town. We have a plan for that, and that's what's going on. So having said that, it sounds to me, and it appears to me, that all council members are in agreement that this is a good idea. So I would say that we proceed with the annexation, and I would entertain a motion.
A move that we approve, the eighteen A O eight Roberts Road and Page Road property annexations and the statement of consistency as attached to this motion document for eighteen R A Z eleven Roberts Road rezoning. And can I do all of them at the same time? Okay. And the rezoning, eighteen R A Z eleven Roberts Road rezoning.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Dry. We now move to closed session. I would recognize Mrs. Bush for our motion.
Pursuant to G S one forty-three, three eighteen, A one, five and three, a move that we hold a closed session to instruct the town staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the town in negotiating the price material, terms of contract, or proposed contract for acquisition of properties, Cary Town Center Property LLC, eleven oh five Walnut Street, Cary, and to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by G S one thirty-two, one dot two, and our one forty-three, three eighteen, ten E.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, and we are now moving into closed session. Motion carries unanimously, and we are now moving into closed session.
We'll reconvene our council meeting at this time. We have no other business scheduled. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you. (Clap)
Visit the Town of Cary website at townofcary.org.